In with that whole topic at the end of the report that I have about rural broadband and where that's headed. But this is a question of public safety, and I think that's part of what's moving it forward. Is that in order to have public safety, you have to have, you can't have a place that's not integrated, you know, and doesn't have proper broadband. And they also want employees. So anyone who knows anybody wants to be a sewer inspector or a whole range of jobs. Really amazing number of jobs that they need people for. For, for whatever, I don't remember the reason, but everybody retired at the same time or is about to. So if you know anybody who's young and looking for employment that has good benefits and likes to live way up there in the country. There you have it. Get in touch with the DEP. Project review, the GIS mapping tool, she did a long presentation on that and it's pretty amazing. You can type in, you can get layers on soils, wetlands, zoning, slopes, flood plains. Everything that you could possibly think of. And out comes a report on that particular land parcel, all the details on that land parcel. And that would be available for planning and zoning and the town board itself. If, for instance, you were interested in buying a parcel of land and you wanted to know every single thing about it. If it was in the corridor, you'd want to know that it was, you know, not going to be problematic with the regulations of the corridor. That's it. You put in the information and out comes the report. So, uh, that's the GIS mapping tool. DRBC, of course, announced the final determination on fracking. And I just see that my computer is about to have no battery power. So I think I'll go plug it in. And basically the other agencies, Park Service and New York DEC and the PA, DCNR, they're all getting ready for summer. That was essentially very important. And monitoring invasive species, there's going to be a lot of programs about knotweed, getting rid of knotweed. The DEC was really helpful to our beautification group in the knotweed and Little Lake Erie project. And NPS, Don Hamilton gave his, the report because Joe Salvatore was not there. And I apologize to Jane and Ben for the fact that that, well, I don't apologize, but then he canceled it. It's regrettable because we've been trying to have a meeting and just isn't happening. Anyway, they are just, uh, just basically filling summer internships and there wasn't too much of a, you know, on, there's nothing different as far as the NPS is concerned. I think what's different. What's different? Yeah.
So what does it mean that Don Hamilton, NPS reserved, reversed its decision on trailer boat launching at DMR?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. That means that it's perfectly okay to do.
Sure. Okay. Yay.
Way it was. And that does is it allows the UDC to go forward. And so there's a very good partnership collaborative effort here between the Boy Scouts, the Town of Tustin, the Sullivan County in terms of improving accesses. And, and at this point, the Park Service at least certainly is not getting in the way at all of this project. And the project is, is to build a proper ramp, cement boat launch. And it's up to the point of having dollar figures from the consultant. So it's going very well. It's going very well. Yeah. Um, where were we?
Evan will certainly be happy to hear that.
Oh yeah. Well, he's been attending the, he probably knew it before me because he goes to the worm meetings. But I, I knew it because, you know, I read the minutes. Um, litter sweep. Is that where we are? Yeah. So litter sweep. The proper dates, April 17th to April 24th. And the Upper Delaware Council is basically like a clearinghouse for this. Each town has its own team and that's the one that Evan decided to be the literal leader of. And it's, so UDC has taken it on itself to get permission to work on Route 97. A lot of people really want to clean up Route 97. From last summer, it was really gross and I'm sure it's even worse at this point. Initially, our idea was to clean up the roads that lead down to the river, the accesses. And I think that's still totally a great idea. But each town gets to decide what roads they want to do, what days they want to work. And the UDC will give them the kits and T-shirts and publicity and whatever else that they need. And hopefully this will work out harmoniously with litter pluck. You know, so that everybody can not be going to the same areas, but that's, so that's where it is. And Evan would be the person to speak to about it further. Where are we? And Shannon and Ashley at UDC, they are just wonderful young women. They are really taking up all the nitty gritty detail stuff of litter sweep. So if anybody's interested, just go over to UDC and ask for Shannon or Ashley and you'll be involved. Where are we? Oh, and they had a Zoom meeting in February that was attended by something like 40 people, I think. Everybody was very enthusiastic. All the towns wanted to be involved in this. School, Narrowsburg Union, students from SUNY, from SUNY Sullivan are volunteering. So there's a lot and lots of hands that want to get involved in doing this. Where are we? Oh, substantial conformance. Okay, opposition paper. There's a lot of discussion about this because it affects the way that our projects such as, the first one that comes to mind is Fiegle's Lake, right? But every project we do has a review process and UDC reviews it and the Park Service. And they go look at the same documents, the same project review workbook. But are we looking for a hundred percent, exactly a hundred percent conformance? Or are we looking for substantial conformance? And at this point, there's much more harmony between the Park Service and the UDC about that. But we felt it was important to put our definition of substantial conformity in, on paper. So it's on paper and it's the way it's always been done, which is an exercise in compromising. You know, compromising substantial means just about perfect, but compromise. And, and that's really an important step because it affects everything. And then we have live versus Zoom and we've decided to do monthly meetings, continue on Zoom. Because we have a lot of people that often don't come because they're at a distance like the DRBC. And they are attending on Zoom. Plus, we really don't have the space. But we do have space for committees. So the committees will meet in person over at the UDC office. And everyone's welcome to come to committee meetings if you have any issues that you want to be there to hear the discussion. They're open, they're open to the public. Where are we? Other, okay. So we come to rural broadband and the federal stimulus package. And I thought it was interesting, the numbers that we have. The importance of it is evident in the sense of public safety, not to mention economic reasons. There's Sullivan County is progressing with a phase one of improving service in Liberty and Monticello. We are phase two, and it's my understanding that they're going to use a system of towers that include all of their emergency ones plus ones that are commercial, I guess. And to use existing structures to put boosters or whatever you, I'm not a technical person. But to boost it to the point where it works much, much better. Now, the money that's coming in the stimulus package is enormous. It's literally, I can tell you that if you, if you, uh, just for, just for broadband, it's 358 million, billion dollars. So I get my millions and billions mixed up. But between the money that they're giving out, geez, the money they're giving to towns and the money they're going to give just for broadband, this is a lot of money. And the figures are in the other room, unfortunately. But that I think is worthwhile looking at because with all this money pouring in to address the lack of broadband. I, there's got to be something really wrong if we don't get some results from it. So I, I don't know which one of you might want to monitor this. I will as far as the UDC is concerned and whatever information we get. It's on our five-year plan. It's something the UDC is committed to monitoring and moving along and distributing information about. So that's what we do. Does anybody have any questions? I think I'm at the end of this report.
I do. This is Star.
Yes. Hi, Star. How are you?
Hi, I'm good. I just have a couple of questions. Those jobs for water and sewer with the DEP. You said that if they want to go up there and, you know, live in the way up there in the country, where is way up there?
Oh, the, um, my whole Margaretville, um, town of Delaware. It's, it's out of Sullivan County. It's on the next county up. Our Cannonsville reservoir is, somebody help me with the name of that town. You know what I mean?
Downsville?
Downsville, Downsville and Delhi. And where there's a hospital, Walton, that's the town I can't think of, but Walton. Oh, there's a lot of very nice towns up there. It's a beautiful area. Great hunting.
The other question I had was you said there's lots of broadband money out there. What does the town and/or we as the townspeople have to do to get on that gravy train?
I don't know. I don't know. I got the figures from a communication from Congressman Delgado. I'm on his mailing list. So he mailed, and this was an email of yesterday, which I can share with you guys. I'll just send you his email and you'll have all the figures, but it does not include how towns access it. I think Sullivan County is probably, would be the place to ask because they're probably on this. They're, first of all, they're going to stand to probably get more money. Second of all, they've got an ongoing rural broadband project. So somebody over in the county has got to be, be aware of how this thing is going to play out.
Who do you know? It's always been the big bugaboo that the more rural the area, the more likely they are just to be dropped by the wayside because it's too expensive to put it in unless they have a gazillion people to pay for it. Is there any kind of an equalization formula that you know of, or was this something else I should talk to the county about?
Yeah.
We can refer those to the county because the, I think what the people don't understand is that right now there is just a proposed amount of money that's coming through until everything is passed. And the county does have their broadband niches that they have started. So I think those questions are better asked from somebody a little higher up on the food chain from us.
Yeah, I would, I would go to the county and see what their planets, the planets are. Either probably, I always start with people I know like Heather Jackson. Or she could at least tell you who the other person to talk to is. So yeah, that's what I would do. And these figures that I was throwing out at you, they are total for the entire state. So I have no idea what we are going to get. And of course, you're right, Star, we are small population wise, so our money's not going to be as big as a more populated place.
Thank you, Susan. I believe Randy's here for the energy committee.
I am. Thanks, Ben. So, uh, February 8th, we had a meeting for the TEC about the horse. Horse is here and it's installed, not operational yet. Two more food merchants were trained, how to collect food properly and deliver it and all. That was the botanist or new restaurant, restaurant at the union and, and Jill Paddow, of course, for Playhouse. Fifty plus food collection buckets are ready to give to participating food merchants this spring. And let's say then I had a meeting with NIPA on 216. Ben was there. All safety protocols are being followed by the installers of the LED streetlights. As Ben mentioned last meeting, the LED streetlights were going to be installed the next day and they were. So very excited about that. Contractor at the work site, contractor work site was established. Documents have been posted on the site. Everything's going according to protocol. We've begun, the lights are now dimmed at 85 to 90% because it's not discernible, but it saves the life of the bulb. You get another like five years if you do that. Then had a meeting with, on 224, with Sullivan Waste Reduction Alliance. That's the people around the county.
I was there, I'm not on the list, but I was there.
You, you heard that one?
Yeah.
I didn't see, I didn't see that you were there. Maybe you came in late. So, um, anyway, there's Sullivan County Waste Management is also introducing a food scrap composting program this year. Really excited for them. And everybody around the county kind of shares their accomplishments and their goals. They're going to be composting 4,000 tons a year and of food scraps. As we said, it was going to be the wave of the future and I'm really excited that they're on board because they're such a large operation. They're going to be studying four to 500 residential families to understand home food scrap collection in the county. They're going to start small and grow it. Their educational programs moving forward, 30% of waste is compostable. Eliminating it from landfills will be greatly reducing diesel truck transportation of that, that garbage. Composting food waste is environmentally and economically a great thing. Composting is the future. Their rollout will be, uh, begin in the next few months as a city pilot residential organics collection program. As I said, they're going to start small and grow the program at the educate public. Bill Cutler, who's in charge of that brilliant guy, really knows his waste management. He spoke of the county's single stream recycling program and, um, let's see. Then they asked me to talk about the LED streetlight installation because we're the first town in Sullivan County to have installation of that, of LEDs. Also talked about soft plastic recycling efforts as well as the horse status. It's a really good meeting, just people sharing ideas that they said. We've collected 7,500 pounds of soft plastic to date. And we've been awarded with four free trex benches. Also with much less plastic in the trees. If you look around, you'll see, I don't see plastic bags in the trees anymore, which is a great thing and in the river and in the landscape. So I think it's, you know, it's discernible. So it's kind of fun. And that's because community residents are contributing so greatly. Star and I are constantly picking up soft plastic. Thank you, Star. Anyway, then we had another meeting on 225 and NIPA again with the LED streetlights. It was a designing meeting. Ben was there too. Discussion included the parking light, LED streetlights in the new town bank property. Once they're, uh, they're closed on that, it's going to also include, the final stage will be installing the six decorative fixtures on Main Street. They're expect, they're a little late in attaining those, so it's going to be at the end of March or early April, the latest. And they'll come back, the installers, one last time and do all the rest of the things that haven't been done. We also talked about Wi-Fi being transmitted from those six Main Street fixtures for the town festivals and parades for residents and visitors. Ben is working with our town IT employee to set it up. System will be able to run a report to inform the town of Wi-Fi usage on normal days and on days of large events, which is really helpful. At another TEC meeting on 31, let's see, we're putting together a press release for April announcing the horse starting date. It's going to be around Earth Day and around the sort of the farmer's market at the union. Ribbon cutting will be live streamed on the TEC Facebook page. So if you don't follow the TEC Facebook page, you should sign up. Just click on follow. It's Tuscan Energy Committee. We're going to be compiling an invite list for supporters of the project. Participating food merchants will be given a certificate. We're going to design. It says something like, we feed the Tuscan horse. It's going to be designating that they're participating in our program. They requested that and I think it's a really nice idea. It's going to be hung in their restaurants, in their markets or theater if, um, Forest for Playhouse wants to show it. So far we have the Heron, Two Queens, Pete's Market, the Botanist, Blue Fox, Laundrette and Forest for Playhouse as our kind of pilot program to start collecting food scraps. Then eventually we'll open it up to residents in Tuscan. Narrowsburg Electric is connecting, connecting the power to the horse, going to be supervised by Scott Porter. Then is going to fill out the inspection form for the code enforcer. Zoom training will soon start soon with volunteer operators led by Impact Technology. They're the makers of the horse in Seattle. Let's see, then we had another meeting with NIPA on 32. That was last week and all safety protocols are still being followed by NIPA and, um, and OSHA. Followed daily. Ninety-six of the lights have been installed so far. So that's exciting. And I hope you guys get to see what they look like at night. And, you know, they have a nice clean look and I'm getting a lot of positive feedback. Thirty percent of the old lights have needed new wiring. So the old Nice Egg wiring was faulty. But this cost is already incorporated in our Tuscan budget. So there's no extra costs at all. Let's see, we're going to be, I told you about decorative lighting. As soon as Ben knows the closing of the bank building, which has that parking lot, we're going to be putting lights and poles up there for safety reasons, which is, we planned that a couple of years ago with this in mind. We didn't know we'd buy the whole bank and the parking lot, but that's plus. On Bridge Street, two 45 watt bulbs are needed. NIPA's ordered them for us. Everything's like really streamlined at this point. It's great. NIPA couldn't locate several locations from Nice Egg's list of Tuscan lights. I went around driving, looking for Hill Street, Pine Street, River Road and two lights on Luxon Lake Road that I don't see. So they're talking with Nice Egg now to kind of figure out what the coordinates are. So as soon as they have that, then they'll have the, the remaining list of, of lights where they have been installed. NIPA has requested, I had made a map years ago of all our streetlights. I have to show them that. I've modified the NIPA press release for Tuscan. Send that out soon. Once we complete the installation. And Tuscan is getting training from SimCon on how to program dimming with the computer system. They want representatives and names and email addresses of those will be trained to do that. In what, in other words, if we want to dim lights at certain locations, right now we have to talk to NIPA because they're in control. But once they train us, then Ben or whoever else is in charge of that can just do it. And, you know, it's all customizable. Every single light is independent. And that's exciting because some residents have already asked for some dimming and we've applied it to those two households. And lastly, on 225, the DRBC and the governors from New York, New Jersey, Pennsylvania and Delaware voted to permanently ban fracking in the Delaware River Basins, protect drinking water for 17 million residents and to protect the river's fish and wildlife. And be noted that the TEC fully supports the ban and thanks all who advocated for our river for 12 long years. So, thank you.
Thank you, Brandy.
Word, have any questions?
No, I just want to compliment Brandy. I, I told the, at the meeting last week, in front of my house on the other side of the road, there was a street light that was so obnoxious for so many years that I had them not lighted at all. I just didn't want any light because, you know, you couldn't dim it for an adjustable. And then last week I saw that when this went up, it is so nice. It's soft and it's enjoyable. It's not in your face. It's really a pleasure. Thank you, Brandy.
You know, we really researched, um, I really researched the, the tone of the light, the wattage of the light. I didn't want it to be cold and, you know, glaring in your face. It's very directional and it's like kind of straight down instead of like kind of a horizontal light that the others were doing. So I think it's a huge improvement. You know, LED streetlights are, they're healthy for the envi- they're healthy for the environment and they're going to save the town tons of money. This is a great program that we got in and just, it's so great in so many ways. So nine years.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Glad you're enjoying it. That's good.
Oh, yeah.
Brandy, may I just say something at Star about the lights and the dimmability, if you will, of them. It's very important that when people make these complaints, anyone who gets the complaint, like in the town or whatever, please let somebody on the TEC know. Because that was one of the promises we made. People were all upset when they were first talking about these lights. Oh, it's going to glare in my windows. And we told them there is this feature that they can actually custom tailor where the light goes and where it doesn't go. And I, I think we just had an instance where we had some people that were really, really upset because they reported it. Nobody told Brandy. And of course, as soon as she found out, she fixed it, like, you know, one, two, three, as usual. But if anybody else gets a comment, if you hear somebody that's upset about the lights, we want this to be a positive experience and please, please let somebody on the TEC know so we can take care of it. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Star. That's true. Actually, I mean, if someone could reach out to me, that would be best. Or if you want to go to the Facebook TEC page and send a message, that's fine too. But, you know, I jump on stuff. I don't want people unhappy. And I really meant it when I said we will accommodate. Two of the lights have been dimmed to 50%. That's as low as we can go because there's safety protocol also. We don't want darkness to the point where, you know, some shenanigans go on. But, um, anyway, so that was taken care of. Again, it's as low as I can go. But I really do want to accommodate any resident who's, who thinks of this as light pollution.
Why did you dim them to 50%, Brandy?
Because these two, two different households said that the light, one of them had never been on. Nice Egg was famous for never having our lights on. Like we had 30% of our lights out. So people got used to the darkness. So now there's light and they're like, wait a minute, there's light in my bathroom window at night. And so, you know, I went to the houses, I took pictures of the lights, I sent them to NIPA and they lowered them as low as, these people wanted it as low as possible. They, in fact, they said, can we have it out? I said, no, you can't have it out because it's a safety feature in the town. But we'll get it as low as we can and 50% is as low as we can. So, um, both of those, those residents asked the same kind of thing.
Okay.
Uh, game of branch?
Branches, okay. The first grant that discuss our current grants. And the first one is the UDC grant for the comprehensive plan, part two. And this is really primarily a reminder that the draft plan may be found on our website or you could see hard copy, but not to be removed in town hall or the library. But more importantly, we wish that you would review it. We've received several comments from those of you that have reviewed it and they have been very, very positive. So we will take all of the comments at a public hearing on March 22nd. We'll take the comments and take them back to committee to review them. That's the first grant. The second grant is the Little Lake Erie Covert. And the project is still slated to begin in July with completion in October. There is some resolutions later on in this meeting that need to go through with regards to the acquisition of the property for the temporary structure. Next grant is Sullivan Renaissance. You might remember that I mentioned that we were going to apply for feasibility study. We were actually turned down for that feasibility study. But the town has decided to enter into the competitive pool for a community impact grant for phase one of the River Walk. This is kind of exciting because we all know the River Walk's been on the plate or on the docket for a very long time, many, many years. And with Shoemaker Engineering, we have defined phase one, which starts at the park, at our Veterans Park and goes underneath the bridge. Shoemaker Engineering has submitted a grant on our behalf related to the green. Shoemaker Engineering has submitted a grant on our behalf uh related to the green uh green portion of the uh of the project. And then we'll submit a community impact grant for the remainder of the uh funds necessary. The water infrastructure project, wow, wow, we, I had a Zoom meeting today for water infrastructure, and we do continue to work on that. And uh we are scheduled next month. The town board will need to, let me just say it correctly. The town board will be expected to resolve to retain Bon Council Services uh to uh next, at next month's meeting. Also, at this Zoom meeting, uh we reviewed many of the different uh funding sources that either have been in the past, that we hope will continue or will open up in the future. But I have to say that between Candace Balmer from R- R cap and Delaware Engineering, we really, really have lucked out with such uh fine resources to help us through this major project. Um also, just as a side note, Candace from R cap did a um a case study, and she used our project as the case study and met with, well, I don't know if she met with, but anyway, Senator Delgado uh read the case study, and he um perked right up because he saw that Tustin in his uh, in his jurisdiction is uh having some water system project uh problems. So we, we at least are on his uh burner, so to speak. Uh lastly, Delaware, we've asked Delaware Engineering, and there's also a resolution that will happen later on in this meeting, to prepare a grant to fund a study to renovate the the town properties, specifically to determine the best use of the bank and Town Hall, and uh maybe to create an inviting Town Hall space. Uh so we will require a twenty percent match for that, and that's later on in the resolution. Any questions?
Jane, I have a question. At Star, is there any word at all about what's going on with the Rasmusson's Building?
Well, it's nothing to do with grounds.
Uh Star, I appreciate the questions. We're going to save them for public comment. I've got a long meeting. And we'll take them during, otherwise we get, I lose control of the meeting. Um so save your questions. I'll be more than happy to have them during our public comment.
Okay.
Jane, did you have anything else with the uh with the grants?
No.
Okay, um I would like to take this time, I didn't do it in the beginning, to welcome Senator Matucci's office. Um I see that they are in the, in the audience. So if you need any comment time, please uh just notify the clerk when we get you in there.
Can you speak up a little bit, Ben?
We're going to move in.
Will you speak up a little?
Yeah.
Okay, how's that?
A little bit.
But I, excuse me, can I just mention something to Star and to Jane? If you go down on on your microphone, the mute button on the bottom left of your screen, and hit the arrow, and then you go to audio settings. Okay, when you go to audio settings on the top where it says speaker and the volume, slide your button to the right, and you'll, you'll be able to hear people that are talking better.
I'm at the top. Okay.
Jill, I don't think the problem was with with Ben's volume. It is, he was fading in and out on my screen. I I couldn't, I couldn't hear him because it would get loud, and then it would get softer again. I don't think he was moving around. So it was something with the audio that was whack.
I think that's because you're also at the bottom of the hill, and your, your signal, your connection is not as good as it could be.
I'm not having any trouble with anybody else, though, so.
Okay, moving into old business, uh three point one, uh the hours for the temporary assistance for the Narrowsburg Water and Sewer Club and the bookkeeper. Um I would make a motion to continue the uh assistant to the water and sewer clerk and the bookkeeper for our next April board meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Al. I will do a second. I have a second from Jill. Bruce?
Hi.
Hi.
Jill?
Hi.
Jane? Al?
Hi.
And I am an honor. Three point two, uh we need to appoint new EVO login holder. Um this is in reference to uh the New York State Project of the COVID replacement down on Main Street. The motion would be to authorize the Deputy Supervisor Jane Luxinger as a designated responsible local official for all matters relating to the New York State Department of Transportation Project. Nine seven five four point eight five to remove Karen Valenti as EVO login holder and to appoint Supervisor Bernard Johnson and the bookkeeper Kelly Agar as EVO login holders for the above referenced project.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion from Jane, and I have a second from Jill. Bruce?
Hi.
Al?
Hi.
I am an I.
Hi.
Jane?
Hi.
And Jill. Uh three point three is an amend the compensation schedule for the acquisition reference to the Little Lake Erie Covert Project. This is what Jane was speaking about earlier, one of them. Uh this is a result of having to re redesign some of the right-of-ways and acquisition areas. Uh the motion is to amend Resolution one forty-nine dash twenty twenty entitled the Little Lake Erie Covert Project Compensation Schedule for adjoining property. Approving the change in awards as follows. The owner, Durham, uh six eight four seven, at a one point eight five value. The award would be rounded to two thousand six hundred dollars. This is a two hundred dollar increase from the previous resolution. And the yard sale, one six six nine, a unit value of one point eight five, rounded to seven hundred dollars. This is a five hundred and seventy dollar increase, and that was a result of the reconfiguring by the right-of-way acquisition.
Uh I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
From Jane, and a second from Jill. Bruce?
Hi.
Al?
Hi.
Jill?
Hi.
Jane?
Hi.
And I am an honor. Three point four, our comprehensive plan. The motion to accept the seeker notice of intent to service a lead agency for the adoption of the Town of Tustin Comprehensive Plan. Whereas the Town of Tustin is completing the process of developing a comprehensive plan, which is a type-one action on the seeker. And whereas in accordance with Seeker Regulations, Title Six of the New York Code of Rules and Regulations, Part Six One Seven, and coordinate review procedures therein, the custom town board is the most appropriate agency attends to serve as lead agency for the secret review of this type-one action. And in this capacity, will determine if the proposed action may have any significant adverse effects on the environment. Therefore, be resolved that the Town of Tustin Town Board hereby declares its intention to serve as lead agency for the secret coordinated review of this type-one action. And be further resolved, the Town Board directs its consultant, Jenny slash Locky, planning to prepare and circulate in accordance with Seeker, a notice of intent for the Town Board to be lead agency to be involved in, to any involved and interested parties, along with the Part One of the FBAF and the link to the draft Comprehensive Plan.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Jane, I have a a motion by Jane, a second?
Second.
I'll second it.
Second from Bruce. Al?
Hi.
Jill?
Hi.
Jane?
Hi.
Bruce?
Hi.
And I am an honor. As part of the Tustin Comprehensive Plan, we have uh Part One of the Full Environmental Assessment Form, Project Insetting, that needs to be completed by the board tonight. We'll go through this. The project and application, applicant sponsor information, the name of the action or project. This is Town of Tustin Comprehensive Plan. The project location is the Town of Tustin, New York. A brief description of the proposed action is the adoption of the Comprehensive Plan to replace the town's Comprehensive Plan of two thousand and seven. The primary person, purpose of the new plan are to chart course for the community's future by putting forth a series of actions within topics that include cultural, historical, and recreational resources, economic development, environmental resources, land use, transportation, and community services and infrastructure. The plan will meet the needs of addressing growth and change within the town for several years, protecting and promoting the special qualities and resources of the town, and aiding the decision-making process of the boards and officials in the town government. The plan is also consistent with many of the principles and actions of county, regional, and state plans, further strengthening consensus of future actions. The plan was developed with opportunities for public input and guided by the Town's Pointed Comprehensive Plan Committee. The applicant sponsors of Town of Tustin Town Board, the telephone number eight four five two five two seven one four six, located at two ten Bridge Street, Narrowsburg, New York. Project contact would be myself, Ben Johnson, same phone number, or supervisor at tustin.org. The same address, two ten Bridge Street. Governmental approvals, governmental entity, city, town board, or village board of trustees. That would be the town board. Uh city, town, or planning board, no. City, town, or village zoning board of appeals, no. Other local agencies, no. County agencies, yes. That would be the planning, uh County Planning Agency. This is referral in accordance with General Municipal Law two thirty-nine dash M. Regional agencies, yes. The Upper Delaware Council for substantial conformance review. State agencies, no. Federal agencies, yes. National Park Service for substantial conformance determination. Coastal Resources is a project for the coastal area or waterfront area of designated inland waterway, yes. Is a project site located in a community with an improved local waterfront revitalization program, no. Is a project site within a coastal erosion hazard area, no.
Uh Ben, what happened about the uh? Ben, Ben, what about, what about the county program?
I'm sorry, which program?
The County Local Waterfront Revitalization Program.
I would have to ask uh, ask Peter on that. I don't know if, if that would cover us for this or not.
I'm sorry.
Assuming he knows about it, that could be the question you can find out.
Okay, sorry.
Planning and zoning act, that's okay. That's a good question. I've got it worked down to find out for you. Um will administrative or legislative adoption or amendment of a plan, local law ordinance, rule, or regulation be the only approvals which must be granted to enable the proposed action to proceed, yes. If yes, we complete sections C, F, and G. So we'll move forward to those. Do any municipally adopted city, town, village, or county comprehensive land use plans include the site where the proposed action would be located? Yes. If yes, does the comprehensive plan include specific recommendations for the site where the proposed action would be located? Yes. Is a site, uh two, I'm sorry. Is a site of the proposed action with any local or regional special planning district? For example, Greenway, Brownfield, Opportunity Area, doesn't need a state or federal heritage area, watershed management plan? Yes, and if yes, identify the plan, the Upper Delaware River Management Plan. Is a proposed action located wholly or partially within an area listed in an adopted municipal open space plan or an adopted municipal farmland protection plan? Yes. If yes, identify the plan, only the county, Sullivan County's uh Conservation Open Space and Management Growth Strategy for Sullivan County, Sullivan County Agriculture and Farmland Protection Plan. Is a site of the proposed action located in municipality with an adopted zoning law or ordinance? No. Is a use permitted or allowed by a special or condition to use permit? No. Is a zoning chain requested as part of the proposed action? No. In what school district is a uh project site located? That would be the Sullivan West Central School and the Eldred Central School. What police or other public protection forces serve the protected site? Solomon County Sheriff and the New York State Police. Which fire protection and emergency medical services serve the project site? The Narrowsburg Fire Department, Tustin Volunteer Ambulance Service, and the Loudoun Fire Department. What parks serve the project site? The project site is the entire town. Parks include the Multicultural Park, the Veterans Park, the D E C Delaware River Access, the National Park Service Ten Mile River Access, the Tustin Mountain Trail. Project details. We don't have to do these. We are forward to Page thirteen. If that's any information which may be needed to clarify the project, if you've identified any adverse impacts which could be associated with your proposal, please describe the impacts plus any measures that you have purpose to avoid or to minimize them. This is Part One. Part Two and Three will be completed uh at our recess meeting, I believe, or the next meeting. Peter will have them ready. The board have any comments on the answers to those questions?
I have a quick, one question, but it back to the Yeah, I think it's on page three.
Okay.
Very first one on top. Is the site of the proposed action located in the municipality with an adopted zoning law or ordinance? I, don't we have an adopted zoning law?
Yes, but the uh, the answer that I would be that the adoption, the action is the adoption of a plan only and not a zoning action. Okay, so that's why it would not be covered under the zoning action, okay? Missed that particular folder. I would make a motion that we accept the Full Environmental Assessment Form, Part One, and authorize the supervisor, supervisor and board for consulting.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by Al, a second by Bruce. Jill?
Hi.
Jane?
Hi.
I am an I, Al?
Hi.
And Bruce?
Hi.
Uh Ken, you weren't here, correct?
Yes, Ben. Can you hear me?
Okay, um on my resolution for the secret notice of intent to service lead agency for the purchase of the Wayne Bank, uh can this be considered a type-one action?
No, no, you don't have to adopt this resolution as is, as set up on on this, on the agenda. All you, this is, this is an unlisted action. Don't even use this resolution. All the board needs to do, because this is an unlisted action, it's an uncoordinated review, there is no other involved agency or interested agency. So what you can do is you can, you can move straight to making a motion. Somebody can make the motion for the town board to declare itself as lead agency for the purposes of of this particular action.
Okay.
Okay, so I think Jane would make that motion to act, for the town board to act as lead agency for the purchase of the Wayne Bank Narrowsburg branch.
Yes, sir.
Suffice, Ken? Okay, I have a motion by Jane, a second. I have a second by Jill. Bruce?
Hi.
Al?
Hi.
I am an I.
Hi.
And Jane. Thank you. Thank you. And again, we'll go over the short environmental assessment form. Do you wish to do this, uh, Ken?
I, I can do it if you want, Ben. I'm happy to do it. Okay, you just read the, this, by the way, is a short environmental assessment form. The one you just went through was a long environmental assessment form. That's the difference between a type one action, which the comprehensive plan is, and this, which is an unlisted action. So the first part of this, part one, is the project information portion of it, and it identi- identifies the project sponsor in part one is the Town of Tustin Town Board. The name of the action or project is the purchase of Wayne Bank Narrowsburg Branch for a future town hall. The project location is ninety-three Main Street, Narrowsburg, New York, one two seven six four. A brief, uh, the brief description of the project action is the project consists of the acquisition by purchase of the existing Wayne Bank Branch located at ninety-three Main Street in the Hamlet of Narrowsburg, Town of Tustin, Sullivan County, New York. The property and the structure thereon shall be repurposed to serve as the town hall of the Town of Tustin, Sullivan County, New York. No physical change in the footprint of the premises as it currently exists is presently contemplated. Aesthetic changes to the exterior of the facility and interior modifications necessary to convert the facility to a town hall are contemplated. The action also includes financing of the purchase price, closing costs, and limited improvements to the premises by bonding thereof pursuant to the local finance law of the state of New York. Going down below, it says the Town of Tustin Town Board is the applicant sponsor with the town's telephone number. I put, uh, Crystal's, uh, town clerk, uh, as the email contact. The twenty-two, two-ten Bridge Street, uh, P L box in Narrowsburg address, uh, as the contact address. And then there's just some questions that are answered to, uh, describe the nature of the project. Question one is, does the proposed pro- action involve the legislative adoption of a plan, local law ordinance, administrative rule or regulation? The answer to that is obviously no. Does the proposed action, this is two, require a permit, approval, or funding from any other governmental agency? The answer to that is no. The question three is total acreage of the site of the proposed action. It's just about, uh, short, a little shy of an acre, point eight six seven acres. We're not going to disturb any acreage in connection with our, our project here. And the total action after we're done is still gonna, or the total site, project site after we're done is still gonna be zero point eight six seven acres. Uh, four asks us to check all the land uses that occur on or adjoining or near the proposed action. Generally, it's in the, it's in the downtown area, so it's predominantly commercial there, so I checked the commercial box. Uh, five is, is with regard to the proposed action, is it permitted use under the zoning regulations? Yes. Is it consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan? Yes. Is the proposed action, this is six, consistent with the predominant character of the existing built or natural landscape? Yes. Uh, seven is the site of the proposed action located in, or does it adjoin a state listed critical environmental area? The answer is no. There's no critical environmental area anywhere in the Town of Tustin or in Sullivan County, for that matter. Uh, those are state designated areas. Eight is, will the proposed action result in a substantial increase in traffic above present levels? No. That's A under eight. B is, are the public transportation services available at or near the site of the proposed action? No. C, are any pedestrian accommodations or bicycle routes available on or near the site of the proposed action? I believe the answer to that is yes. Um, does nine, does the proposed action meet or exceed the state energy code requirements? That, that's our, that's building code requirements. Obviously, we're gonna be within that, so the answer is yes. Uh, ten, will the proposed action connect to existing public or private water supply? Yes. Obviously, we're in the water district, and next is eleven with regard to wastewater, so that's the source, that's the sewer connection, so the answer there is yes as well. Twelve is, does the project contain, site contain, or is it substantially contiguous to a building, archaeological site, or district which is on the national or state register of historic places or has been determined to uh, by the commissioner of the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation to be eligible for listing on the state historic, uh, register of historic places? I think the answer to that is no, insofar as this particular site is concerned. Um, thirteen, does any portion of the site of the proposed action or lands adjoining proposed action contain wetlands or other water bodies regulated by federal, state, or local agency? The answer is no, we don't, we're not on the river, so I think the answer is no. Um, would the proposed action physically alter or approach into an a, any existing wetland or water body? Definitely, the answer to that is no. Fourteen, identify the typical habitat types that occur on or likely to be found on the project site. Since when the downtown hamlet, I thought it appropriate to check a suburban or urban. I didn't think any of the others really applied. Uh, fifteen, does the site of the proposed action contain a species of animal or associated habitats listed by the state or federal government as threatened or endangered? No. Uh, is sixteen, is the project site in the one hundred year flood plain? No. Seventeen, will the proposed action create stormwater discharge either, uh, from point or non-point sources? The answer is no, I, the, the, again, the property is fully developed, so whatever stormwater discharge there is off the property already exists, there's nothing gonna happen by virtue of what we're going to do. Eighteen, does the proposed action include construction or other activities that would result in the impoundment of water or other liquids? Obviously, the answer to that is no. Nineteen, has the site of the proposed action or an adjoining property been the location of an active or closed solid waste management facility? The answer to that is no. And twenty, the last question is, has the site of the proposed action or adjoining property been the subject of remediation ongoing or completed for hazardous waste? And the answer to that is no. So if the board is in agreement with those answers, um, I think a motion to accept this part one would be appropriate following, which, Ben, you could sign the part one as supervisor acting on behalf of the town.
I make that motion to accept.
I second that.
I have a motion from Jane to accept. I have a second from Jill, Bruce, Al, Jill?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
And I am an aye.
Now, i- if you want, we can go forward, and I don't know if, if, uh, Crystal had it set up to go, but we can go forward and do the part two and, and, and make the. I'm sorry?
Yep.
It's on the screen, we're ready to roll.
There you go, okay. So part two, this is where we actually do the assessment now, uh, based on, on the facts of part one. So there are eleven questions that are asked on here, and I've gone through them and checked them all, is no or small impact may occur. And let's just run through them. One is, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use or zoning regulation? Clearly, the answer to that is no. Uh, two, will the proposed action result in a change of use or intensity of land? Again, the answer to that is no, we're just gonna repurpose existing facilities. Um, we're not gonna change or alter the use of it. Um, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? Again, the community isn't gonna change as a result of this, same, the building's already there and it's gonna remain there. Um, four is, will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area? You'll remember from part one, the answer was, we're not in a C E A, so the answer to that is no. Uh, five, will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, uh, biking or walkway? The, again, the answer to that is no. If anything, this, there'll probably be less traffic, uh, trips generated for town, uh, for town purposes than presently exist for banking purposes. Um, will the proposed, this is six now, will the proposed action cause an increase in use of energy? And it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? I think the answer to that is, is also no. Um, I don't think we're gonna use any more energy than is presently used, and it's entirely possible that when, when you guys get done with it, it'll actually use less energy. Um, seven is, will the proposed action impact existing public slash private water supplies? And B, public slash private, uh, water wastewater treatment utilities, um, impacted? No, they're connected, obviously, but again, we're probably not gonna increase the inflow or the water usage as a result of it. If anything, it, it may wind up even be a little less usage. Uh, eight is, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? The answer to that is clearly no. Again, if anything, we might make it a little more aesthetically pleasing by the time you're done than what it presently is. Um, nine, will the proposed action result in an adverse change natural resources? The examples are wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, or fauna. Again, the act, the answer to that would be no. Ten, will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? We're not changing any of the drainage patterns, we're not moving any earth as a result of what we're doing, so the answer to that would be no. And eleven, will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? And it seems that the answer to that is obviously a no as well. So that is the part two. Again, if the board would make a motion to accept those, if you're in, in, in agreement with those answers, we could then move on to the part three.
So moved.
A second.
I have one by Jane and a second by Jill, Bruce?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
I am an aye, Jill?
Aye.
And Jane?
Aye.
Thank you.
So moving on to the part three, this is where you make your determination of significance, and the, the options are either that you render a, or conclude that should, there should be a positive declaration that this proposed action, which is acquiring this property and turning it into the town hall, may result in one or more potentially large or significant adverse environmental impacts. Or that, alternatively, that, that it will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts, which would be the negative declaration. In contemplation of a negative declaration, given the answers to the part two that was accepted by the board, I prepared an, uh, what's called a reasoned elaboration in the part two, and that's what's in the, uh, blue highlighted area, and I'll read that really quickly. In part two, all responses are indicated to be no or small. The project involves the acquisition and financing of the, uh, existing Wayne Bank Branch located at ninety-three Main Street in the Hamlet of Narrowsburg. The premises is already fully developed with an existing building that serves as a bank branch and surrounding parking area and drives. The existing building, parking areas, and drive shall remain and be repurposed to serve as the town hall for the Town of Tustin. While aesthetic changes will be made to the exterior and interior of the building, and alterations will be made to the interior of the building for its new purpose, the footprint of the premises will remain essentially unchanged. The intensity of the use of the premises will be no greater and likely less than its existing use as a bank branch. It is anticipated that it will generate less traffic as a town hall than as a bank branch. The existing community around the premises is predominantly commercial, so the use as a town hall will be consistent with the character thereof. Energy use and use of public water and sewer services will likely be less than such uses of the facility as a bank branch. As the site is already fully developed, there can be no impairment of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources, adverse change to natural resources, or an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems. For the same reasons, no hazard to environmental resources or human health will be created. So that would be the reasoned lab- elaboration, supporting a negative declaration, if that's the board's pleasure. And if that is the board's pleasure, it would be appropriate for someone to make a motion to adopt the negative declaration, so that Ben can then sign the, uh, bottom of part three.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. I have a motion from Jill and a second by Al, uh, Bruce, uh, Al?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
And Jill? And I am an aye. Thank you, Ken, for the.
No problem, man, anytime.
Three point six. The adoption of dog fees, a motion to town board hereby establishes the following fees to be paid to the town clerk by upon redemption of seized dogs pursuant to one fifteen dash six, subdue the code of the Town of Tustin. Twenty-five dollars for each dog, for each day of impoundment to offset the expense incurred by the town to board such seized dog, and seventy-five dollars to offset the expense incurred by the town to transport each seized dog for him held.
Well, before I, before we move on this, um, it was, uh, I happen to be looking at that bill today, and, um, one of the things it said, if I recall correctly, is that if the, if the, uh, uh, pet is held for more than five days, the cost goes up. So is that built into this?
It is not built into that. Um, there are things around it, not really. We don't always find the owner of the dog. But it's very rare.
To be in there?
That these fees will be charged to the individual that the dog belongs to.
Right.
Um, those fees, if the dog is, the owner isn't found.
They revert back to the town, and we're responsible for them regardless.
Correct.
So these fees are only good for the, for the finding of the dog's owner and levying the fees.
So this just means that the Town of Tustin residents need to help us find the dog owners. Get them, back their family.
Okay. If you're ready to make.
I would accept the motion on that.
I'll move that we adopt these fees, twenty-five dollars for each day of impoundment. And this is to offset the expense that, uh, is incurred, it's not something that, uh, we're making a profit from. And also seventy-five dollars to offset the expense incurred by the Town of Tran- uh, Town to transport each seized dog or pet for impoundment.
I have a motion by Al, a second that motion. I have a second by Bruce, Jill?
Yep.
Jane?
Aye.
And I am an aye, thank you. Uh, three point seven is, I will make a motion to authorize the town clerk to advertise for stone and sand bids for the highway department, uh, with an opening of the bids on April the sixth, twenty twenty-one, at the town board's special meeting, and a warning of the bid on the thirteenth of April, twenty twenty-one, at the regular town board meeting. I will make the motion, a second.
Second.
By Al, Bruce?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
And Jill?
Aye.
I will open the floor for public comment.
I have a comment I'd like to make. Um, I asked about the Rasmussen's building only because it's been an egregious eyesore now for several years. It's right in the center of town, next to the town showpiece of a deck, and it really, I, I don't understand why it's taking so long to resolve that and at least do something to make it look less awful in the interim of, you know, finding another buyer or whatever they're going to do with it.
And the other question.
Just agree with you on that start. Um, as far as a town, I, and speaking with the building department, you know, the things that you would like to see would have to actually come from the owners of the building.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, Ben, can I add a, add something here? I once asked, uh, one of our real estate people in town who was in, you know, all real estate people are gonna be eager to sell that building, and he said, it's an insurance issue, unresolved insurance. There isn't really anything
Aye.
anybody can do at this point.
No, Brian.
Okay, I just, the, the reason that I asked it too is because who is responsible for that building? And not the maintenance of it, but about a week ago, there was a pile of snow on the Rasmussen's roof that all of a sudden came down in an avalanche. And there was, I know in the past they've had problems with the snow and ice, and they said, don't park here or park at your own mist. But there was no warning of any kind, if anybody had had a car or, God forbid, was standing there, this thing came down like a ton of bricks. Now, who, who's responsible for maintaining, you know, some kind of warning and clearing whatever the road is in front of that building?
That would be the property owners.
So the Harrisons should have put up a sign saying beware of the snow?
They're the property owners, yes.
Okay, all right. One last quick question, and not even question, a comment. I was very happy to see Ken Klein read that, uh, last part of the, uh, plan that you worked on, because he was clear as a bell. Al, and you, Ben, I'm sorry, it was waffling in and out. Your, your audio was so bad that half the time when you could hear anything, it was just mumble, mumble, mumble. So I don't know if that can be addressed or fixed or whatever, but maybe everybody can go into Al's office and, and, uh, Ken's office and broadcast from there.
I apologize for that star. I don't know what the issue is with the, uh, you know, I don't know what the issue is with the audio.
You just, you just faded off. Okay, thank you.
Hey, can I ask a question? Is this public comment?
Go ahead, Brandy.
Oh.
Yeah, I was just.
I'm sorry, um, I'll be quick. I was just wondering, um, the, the town board started their workshop meetings again a week before the town board meeting, is that true?
We did have a workshop meeting last week, yes, to go over some of the issues that we, we have on.
Is the public, uh, allows to go to that? I would have attended, I didn't know anything about that. It was posted.
Usually what's been happening is they've been getting canceled. Uh, this particular workshop, as you can see, we've got a very large agenda tonight.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not questioning why you have it, I just wanted to know if, uh, the public's allowed.
Right, you know, that's why, when we don't have a, a large agenda, we don't normally do it, but we've got quite a, quite a few irons in the fire right now, and that's. But yes, and they aren't all on the schedule with the Zoom ID.
And can I, will the minutes be posted soon for that? Because there was something in there I wanted to know about from the TEC, from our attorney, and I I have no idea what was said at that meeting, so I'd love to hear what he said. Will the minutes be posted soon?
Yeah, check.
Okay, I mean, I'd love to have that sooner than later. And I'm just wondering also, the new bank building acquisition. So it sounds like you're moving the town hall offices to the bank building, and so then what happens with the old town hall offices?
Again, this is all a discussion right now. This is something that's only come up. Where you'll see later on in the meeting, Jane is working with a grant application and can kind of help us address this that'll be brought up. It's not a case of, we're gonna, you know, hopefully buy this building, and then hopefully we close on May. Then May first, everybody abandoned. We need to really make best use of our space and determine where we're going, how we're doing it. There's, we're still at the beginning stages of it. Buying it is the first thing.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to follow up on what.
Mike, I'm just going to cut you short a second, and I'm going to give the audio back to the town clerk. Coming up from the senator's office, you were.
Hi there, sir. Thank you for having me tonight. It's been great hearing everything going on. It makes sense you had a workshop, because it's been a very robust agenda. It's been nice hearing a little of everything. I'll likely be following up just with some questions. I don't want to bother anybody with them right now. But the senator is opening a Liberty Office starting next week. So anybody that would like to set up any appointments or speak about anything, feel free to reach out to us, let us know. Also, I'm his director of legislative affairs, so I've been trying to pop into as many community board meetings as I can to get a feel of what's going on, because, you know, that's where the best policy comes from, is from the community. But feel free to reach out to our office if, yeah, there's anything we can help with. Thank you, everybody.
Does the board have any questions for the senator's office?
Oh, yeah, feel free.
Not right now.
Okay. I didn't know Jane was going to jump in.
I was, I was about to, believe.
Oh, please.
Well, no, I was, I was just, I guess I wanted to stress the issue of broadband with the senator.
Absolutely. It's on our radar. It's impossible for it not to be on our radar. Can I tell you, everywhere, even the meetings I've been having with Sullivan County about the rail trail and whatnot, constantly there's different people cutting in and out, and it's it's been happening with a lot of our school students. It's a huge issue. We're on top of it. We're looking at ways to possibly do it through the library system. But that is a conversation we're having.
Okay, but we have to keep asking, and we have to keep asking. So thank you very much.
Oh, absolutely. No, stay on top of it. Please keep ringing the bell on that. It's the only way something will happen. And can I say, during the pandemic, it's really exposed what a problem it was, from people working at home to students at home. We hear reports every day of outside of the libraries, cars pulling up, not even coming inside, just to get on the Wi-Fi. Anything we can do to help, anywhere you think that the office can step in and make a push, we're happy to. Again, I've been in contact with Sullivan County. I actually wrote down the comments of phase one and phase two, and I'm looking to reach out about that.
Great, thank you.
Oh, Ben, can I add something here? Speaking up for the UDC, the Upper Delaware Council, you all can expect to hear us asking for our share of New York State's funding for the Upper Delaware Council on a regular basis. And the other thing is, I would love to know how we could, or I could, it would be interesting to be on your mailing list, like Representative Delgado sends a regular newsletter. And it would be really nice for us to have a newsletter that would give us your contact information, your email, the way that we could reach out to you. So how do we sign up for that?
Absolutely. You can either go to the senators, we're pretty responsive on all social media. But he also has a senate website that has all of the office contacts, and there's a sign up for the office there that you can plug in. I'm not sure if you have to do a comment. I have to look into that. Or you can send me your email. My personal email at the senate office is O'Brien C. O-B-R-I-E-N-C, just like my name down at the bottom here, O'Brien C at NYSenate.gov.
Okay.
And I'm happy, we haven't sent out any newsletters yet. We're still getting together a lot of contacts. We kind of walked into Bleach Computer Systems where everything was taken with them out of the last office, so as soon as we can get enough emails to get out a newsletter, we're happy to put you on the list.
Sure, thank you.
I guess the last comment that I have for you, Camille, is related to funding for the infrastructure, the failing infrastructure around the county. In particular, we're looking at our water system, and the state in the past has opened up lots of funding. I realize the pandemic has put a damper on funding sources, but when money becomes available, I would hope that that would go to the top of the list, the we funding that has happened in the past, so.
Absolutely. Well, we're hoping, coming out of this pandemic, that whoever's in the governor's seat when we come out of this pandemic, that infrastructure is a top priority from the roads to the water systems. That is a problem everywhere. I was having a talk with our chief of staff today about the road systems themselves. But the water system has been an issue at multiple boards, and they can't really put it off for much longer. So hopefully, with the jobs program, infrastructure is going to be a top priority coming out of this.
Okay.
And if you guys need any help with grants, if you see grants available, and you want us to push it on the backend from DASNE, we've been trying to work with them. Again, everybody knows that the budget was, there's a pause on any state funding, and we're just waiting for that to lift and to start seeing where the floodgates lift and how we could apply it to our district. Again, a lot of the meetings, just to kind of see where the need is, so when that opens, we're ready.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And please keep in touch. Anything that comes up, please feel free.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you very much. Mike?
Hi, I just wanted to follow up on Brandy's question there. It's kind of a corollary to it. When the town purchased the bank building, there was a lot of speculation about what use would be made of it. And it seems now we seem to be trending toward moving town hall there. Is that the best possible use for that building? And what's the rationale for doing that?
The town is very limited in what they can do with that particular building if they buy it as a town, and Ken can feel free to interrupt me at any point if I say something off or to support what I say, but we can't buy that building and then turn around and either resell it or rent it to another entity for them to use. It has to have, if we're using public money to do it, it has to have a specific first purpose that the town's doing. We could do something like put the Tustin youth in there and say, you know, this is yours to use, or the Historical Society, and say, we can make a museum, but we can't do something like find a food service that's going to rent it and turn it into a restaurant. It has to meet certain specific obligations we as a town have to abide by.
You're locked into having to use it in a public facility of some sort.
Correct. And obviously, we do have a town space issue with offices. But that is what we are looking at right now, and that was, you know, the direction we're going. I don't like to put a finality on it and say, yep, this is exactly what we're doing, but that's what we're doing.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Greg, I believe.
Yes, hi, Ben. When we were talking about the when we were talking about the.
I do that voice.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay.
Yes.
When we were talking about the light poles, and we were going over the inventory of work yet to be done, the extra lights going in at the park, I did not hear those mentioned, and I wanted to make sure that those were still on the radar.
They're on the radar, but they're not in the front of the radar, because those have been repurposed back up to the bank property. But we're going to have to find some funding in order to do that. In order to put them down there, we're going to have to find some funding to do it. Originally, our conversation was that the light poles that were originally slated for the bank parking lot, we had an issue with NIPA being that we did not own the property, so therefore we could take them from there down to the, to the park. Now that the situation has changed, now we need to find some funding so that we can go forward with that part of the project.
Okay, well, I guess I'll go ahead and speak for the neighborhood watch group then, and say that with spring coming, I think we're going to see those issues returning, it seems likely. So I think part of the discussion needs to be some kind of interim solution for getting more light down there, because obviously looking for funding, getting poles, that type of thing, is going to be a much longer process than anyone was expecting after our initial discussion. So is there a way to follow up on that?
Yeah, why don't you and I have a conversation and
Great.
You know, try to find something. I think that would be the, you know how to get hold of me, and, you know, persistence doesn't hurt.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Any other?
Can I just ask you, because that completely threw me. I had no idea what, there were, how many streetlights down at the park were replaced?
We discussed that with NIPA when we originally were doing the when we, I don't know if you remember the conversation or not.
I've never heard a conversation.
They weren't going to be able, they weren't going to be able to install the lights in the bank parking lot, because the town was not the owner of the property.
Yeah, but who decided to move them up to the parking lot, since we do, we're going to own the property? I never would have thought we would move them from the park.
What Greg was asking was, the community watch group or the community group down on the flats was asking for some lights to be put up there. We had the availability of lights, since there was the ones that were going to be put in the parking lot, that NIPA said, no, we can't put them in there, because you don't own the property. So, okay, we could take those lights then that are already paid for and are already set for construction, including the poles, and we could look at using them down in the park. However, the town now is in the process of purchasing the property, so NIPA now can put those poles in, just like they said before. When can we put them in? They can't put them in until after we have, we take ownership of the property. So those poles that the original inventory called for are going to be able to be put where they originally were wanted to be, which is in the park, a lot of behind the bank.
Yeah, okay, I never knew about, I mean, I knew we planned ahead to have them in the parking lot. We were going to pay for the actual poles and the lighting fixtures and armatures, but I had never heard about the flats. So we're not, nothing was taken away from the flats. It was just, the concept was changed back to the original concept. Okay, I didn't know that.
Right, the concept was. Any other comments? If there's no other comments, we're going to move back into new business. Five point one. If the board is ready to accept the minutes, it's presented for January fifth, the organizational meeting, January twelfth, the regular, and the February ninth, regular, or any corrections noted or comments.
I move to accept.
I have a motion. I have a motion from Jill to accept the minutes from January fifth, January twelfth, and February ninth, as presented. A second on the motion.
I'll second.
I have a second from Al, Jane.
Aye.
Jill.
Aye.
Al.
Aye.
Bruce.
Aye.
And I am an aye. Five point two. Motion to approve the soft plastic initiative by the Tustin Energy Committee, whereas the Tustin Energy Committee desires to protect the environment in soft plastic refuse that poses a danger to wildlife, fish, and humans, and whereas the Tustin Energy Committee desires to provide soft plastic drop-off locations throughout the town to achieve the goal of reducing the effects of the plastic on the environment, and whereas the Tustin Energy Committee wants to provide a recycling program for unwanted soft plastic waste to reduce garbage volume by keeping the waste out of the lane fills, and whereas the Tustin Energy Committee desires to raise awareness of reducing the use of plastic, thereby reducing carbon emissions and allowing residents and businesses to recycle soft plastic, and whereas an additional incentive tracks rewards collection efforts for free benches made of high-performance, low-maintenance recycling materials for our community and visitors to use, and therefore mirrors that the town of Tustin Town Board hereby supports the Tustin Energy Committee in creating a soft plastic recycling initiative. So I would make a motion based on the resolution to support the Tustin Energy Committees in creating a soft plastic recycling initiative.
I'll second that.
A second from Bruce. Jill.
Aye.
Jane.
Aye.
Al.
Aye.
Bruce.
Aye.
And I am an aye. Five point three, the scenic byway contribution. This is a contribution that's already been budgeted in our twenty-twenty-one budget. So I would make a motion to approve the yearly voluntary contribution in the amount of one thousand dollars to the Upper Delaware Scenic Byway.
A second that.
I have a second from Jill. Jane.
Aye.
Bruce.
Aye.
Al.
Aye.
Jill.
Aye.
And I am an aye. Five point four, a motion that the town of Tustin acknowledges that a liquor license application is being filed by the launderer at LLC located at twenty Fifth Street, Narrowsburg, New York, where a liquor, wine, beer, and cider license. In this instance, the town waves its rate to the thirty-day hold and consents to the processing issuance of the authority license. I will put that in as a motion, and a second.
Jill.
I will second.
Jill.
Aye.
Jane.
Aye.
Bruce.
Aye.
I'm an aye, and Al.
Make sure it's changed to Fifth Street from Fiftieth.
Yeah, she caught that already.
Okay.
Jane, on your USDA grant.
Yeah, I was looking at that. I think the motion has to authorize the supervisor to appoint the deputy supervisor to apply. Is that right, Ken?
Yeah, that sounds correct.
Yeah, that's fine, Jane.
Okay.
And the purpose of the grant is?
Of the USDA grant was, let me just think about that. That was for the feasibility study for for community.
Right, for the, at the bank, yeah.
Okay. But a motion would be.
To authorize the supervisor to appoint the deputy supervisor to apply for USDA grant for feasibility.
For feasibility study.
Study for town hall.
Okay.
Okay. And?
Jane. And further resolve that the town of Tustin approves a twenty percent match for the above USDA grant payable to Delaware Engineering pending the grant.
Pending grant, and you can even make it more specific of three thousand dollars if you wanted to.
Twenty percent match, not to exceed three thousand dollars.
Yes, that's right.
I will make the motion.
I'll second it.
Second, I have a second from Jill. Bruce.
Aye.
Al.
Aye.
Jane.
Aye.
Jill.
Aye.
And I am an aye. Jane, was that the only resolution you needed this evening? Jane, was that the only resolution you needed this evening? Was it, am I missing one?
I, I think we've done them. You did them before. I, I think we've got them all.
E V O is what I'm thinking of. We're going to be moving into an executive session to discuss the acquisition and potential sale of real property. I'm going to open up public comments. And for those that aren't going to stay after the executive session, uh, this meeting will be recessed at the end. Um, we are going to be recessed to next Thursday, which is the eighteenth. The time is yet to be determined. We're gonna figure that out before the end, so you know that it will be a recessed meeting. And that's for the purpose of bond council uh, regarding the purchase of the, the Wayne Bank property. So at this point, I will reopen public comment for anybody that has public comment before we move to executive session.
Uh, I'm easily confused, so I'll just jump in with one quick question. Uh, haven't they been selling beer, line and wit, and liquor down at the laundrette for many years?
Um, they have. That doesn't mean that they don't have a license. Uh, it might be, I see cider is on here. I don't know if they've sold cider before, or it might possibly be a change in the application to wanting to have it outside on their deck area. I, I don't. Or it might be just that the hard liquor was added to it.
Oh, they've been serving hard liquor. That's uh, ju- just, just seemed odd that, seemed odd that an establishment that's already been doing that is now applying for a license. You're right, it might be an amended application. They have been selling all of the above already.
And knowing New York State, if they were doing it illegal and there was a fine to be assessed, they would find that out.
No doubt. No doubt.
If there's no other public comment, I would make a motion to enter executive session, discuss the acquisition and potential sale of real property.
I'll second that.
I have a second from Jane.
I.
Jill? Bruce?
Hi.
Al?
Hi.
Jane?
I.
And I am an I. For those that don't return, thank you for attending this evening. We'll see you after the executive session, those that remain. I'm guessing nobody. It's all of us.
Yeah. I thought Ben, Ken, Jill, Jane, Bruce and the town. Now, now we are good.
We're good now?
We are good now.
Okay.
You know, Ben, apparently you need to learn how to sound and read like Ken. So go take classes. Turn that down.
I guess, Ken, one of the things you wanted to discuss with the board was the uh, the bond issue as far as uh, length of time?
Yeah, my, my question was, and I had just kicked this around with Ben and we, we thought we'd just see what the board's input was, but given the amount, you're talking about a bond of a hundred and sixty.